We call this meeting the Tacoma Park City Council order. A clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Anyone else?
Councilmember Smith will not be here this evening, and Councilmember Grimes will be here closer to 7:30. And so what we need to do at this point is have our public hearing on the amendments to the Tacoma Park Code to require business and institutional recycling and to revise the requirements for residential, single-family, and multifamily recycling. This hearing is on an amendment to Title 10, Refuse in the city code, which will modernize the city's residential recycling requirements and implement a business and institutional recycling requirement. Amendments to the Housing Chapter will clarify that tenants are required to recycle. If adopted, the effective date of all the amendments would be January 1st of 2016. And so...
Nobody's signed up. There's some people here who think to watch what happens. Perhaps somebody would want to speak.
Well, does anybody want to speak at the public hearing? All right, I'll hold the public hearing open for a while to see if somebody comes. Let me say at this point that what we've scheduled this evening is the public hearing, and then we have scheduled first reading of this for next Monday, July 20th, and second reading of it the following Monday, July 27th. If those two readings pass, then it will take effect January 1.
That's right.
And we will take public comments at the public hearing this evening, and we will also take public comments at our next two meetings as well.
So we're waiting for the crowds to show up.
Well, we're waiting for councilmembers to show up, too.
Well, I'm accounted for.
Oh, but you missed the roll call. We're in session.
Excellent.
Two of us were here so far. Nobody's speaking at the public hearing. We're waiting to see if more people, more crowds are coming through the door to speak at the public hearing.
Okay, what else can we vote on? It's just for people.
What? Well, then, oh, I hear what you said. I never figured it out, yeah.
Councilmember Schultz, for the record.
And it went by me so quickly it didn't compute, but I'm not going to ask for a repeat. She's wondering what else can we vote on.
Just lusting after power.
Exactly.
I had to dill this afternoon. The WSSC has not been able to start working next week. It's been a long time since.
I was on a call today and just sort of saying, "What's up?" I forgot it.
Apparently, they forgot to talk to you.
No longer in June. Because they had set off.
But anyway, they talked to Ian Jenkin and told him. And obviously, they told him they're starting next week. How? Apparently, they're planning on just using one contract or not. Who is there to know if it's contemplated?
So I'll just reiterate to my colleagues that Councilmember Smith will not be here this evening. And we will move to the remainder of our agenda. First off, just a quick reminder that this evening, we're starting our meeting here in the auditorium. And then when we get to the end of our voting items and discussion of state legislation, we will take a break and we will move to the azalea room. Additional items this evening? We don't have any. I want to point out a couple of things on upcoming agendas. The first one involves something that I believe the council isn't aware of that just came up today, which is that next Monday, July 20th, the closed session at the beginning of the meeting, which would be preliminary discussion of terms and conditions for the letter of intent with NDC, has been moved to one week later, July 27th. And the NDC progress report on development of the Tacoma Junction property, which was scheduled for July 27th, will not be July 27th. The schedule for that is yet to be determined, but it'll be as soon as possible after the closed session discussion that we have on the 27th. Then on Monday, the 20th, what we will have is discussion of a single reading ordinance authorizing a grant agreement with Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church for the Tacoma Park Shared Use Community Commercial Kitchen. We will then have a work session discussion of recommended community grant program awards, discussion of community legacy application, vacant and blighted property initiatives, and discussion of proposed ban of single-use plastic bags. Monday, the 27th, we'll have a resolution adapting an update to the strategic plan and work session discussion of the police community relations consultant request for proposals and of the noise control board and noise complaints. And that is our final meeting of the summer. So we will be on recess during the month of August, and then we come back after Labor Day. Labor Day is Monday, the 7th, when the city will be closed. And our first meeting back in September is on Tuesday, September 8th. So that just gives a little flavor of a couple upcoming things and a couple things that moved recently. What we will take next is public comments on any voting items we have this evening, and we will take them in order. So first, I'll take any comments on our resolution affirming support for county funding of the Piney Branch Pool.
Good evening. I'm Ken Flemmer, the Executive Director of Alvinus Community Services that manages the Piney Branch Pool. I was up today at the hearing for the, oh, what is it? It's the Planning, Housing, and Economic Budget Oversight Committee. Florene and Reimer and Leventhal are the members. And it was rather interesting. In the notes that they had in the document, because the pool has struggled financially and needs significant capital repairs to temporarily close or suspend operations, that was the executive's recommendation. And then it talks about how the pool is an important asset. But then it said, moreover, the council received a significant amount of correspondence in support of the pool operations. So the hearing opened up by basically Nancy saying, "Why are we here? Didn't we just have this discussion two months ago where we overwhelmingly said this is an important asset?" And so it's very clear that the advocacy work of the citizens of Tacoma Park and the council here is important because they did note it and put it in the notes. It was also observed that costs, really, when you look at it, are in line with other pools. It's not some deep, dark hole here that's a money pit. A comment was made that if you close it, it'll most likely never reopen. And if you close it, it's going to sit there for two, three more years till we find the money to do something else with it. In the meantime, you're going to have mold and mildew and deterioration. It's going to cost you a whole lot more than keeping it operational as you continue to deliberate as to what it should be. So I was a bit encouraged, and I just want to thank those that are doing petitions and other things. It is of value. It is noticed. And they did indicate to us that the full council will meet on the 29th to review the recommendations that were made to keep or not to keep. So the three members that were there, all three spoke positively, and all three voted to continue the operation of the pool through 2016. So I just wanted to give that little report and to again thank you for your efforts in standing up beside us to keep this... You know, just in the lunch and learn, those kids come back, they are so excited about what they're learning. "Man, I can put my face in the water now. I can blow bubbles. I'm not afraid to go down and pick something off the bottom." So it's, if they aren't learning how to swim, they're at least learning a lot of water safety things. And that's an important thing. It's a confidence builder. So it's, it is indeed an asset. We're glad that we can be part of helping the city have that asset. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I just wonder whether the county council is going to be having their final deliberations on this on the 28th or the 29th?
Oh, it could be. It's the very end of the month.
It's, it should be Tuesday, the 28th.
Okay, I'll stand corrected.
Okay, great. Other comments on this item?
Hi, Laura Barclay, 334 Lincoln. And I'm also here to support the city's resolution to urge Montgomery County Council to continue to fund the Piney Branch Pool. I started a petition four days ago. We have approximately 300 signatures so far. And I thought I would use public comments to just touch on a couple of the, a few of the comments that were made on the website or on the petition. The first being, the pool's been an asset to our community where the closest pool is more than seven miles away. And Montgomery County recreation sources are not distributed equally across the county. The Piney Branch Pool serves an area of the county without other resources. Equality is evidenced by action. Next, the pool serves a diverse population of Tacoma Park and other Montgomery County residents living within the Beltway. It is frequently used and serves as a tremendous place of activity and learning for residents who do not have the resources to go elsewhere. Next, drowning is the second leading cause of death after automobile accidents in children under 12. The pool is used by kids who attend the school, aftercare, and neighboring rec center and countless others who need a low-budget option. Next, closing this pool would be a terrible waste of an existing resource. Next, if you cut funding for this pool, it will highlight the disparity between Down County and Western and Northern Montgomery County services. This pool provides an important access for those of us who work full-time and can't drive our kids to the pool further out. Next, the seniors and disabled Victory Tower residents rely on the Piney Branch Pool for exercise and therapy. I'm happy to provide you with a complete list of signatures that we'll collect and will bring to the meeting on the 28th. But I thank you for your continued work on this and support. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments on this item? Okay, next we'll take comments on second reading ordinance amending the elections code. Any comments on that one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the last item that we're voting on this evening that we'll take comments on, which is the first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2016 budget amendment number one. Okay, seeing no comments on that. We will move to additional public comments, which is a time to comment on our work session item on the, well, it's not labeled work session, but it is discussion of state legislation to be proposed to the Maryland Municipal League and anything that's not on our agenda.
Okay. Mayor Williams, City Council, nice to be here. My name is Adam Landsman. I am a resident of Mississippi Avenue in Ward 4, and I'm also a property manager with Aboris Realty. That's A-B-A-R-I-S for the herd. We are a property manager of condominium cooperative and homeowners association communities, predominantly Montgomery County. We're based in Rockville, Maryland. We manage 150 communities comprising about 15,000 homes. In Tacoma Park, we are responsible for the Tacoma condominium at 111 Lee Avenue and the Tacoma Overlook condominium on New Hampshire Avenue. I personally manage 111 Lee Avenue, and it's a fabulous building, and we're doing a great deal of work there to try to revitalize it and to bring value to its owners and to the community. We have put a great deal of money into the building and its maintenance and care, and we're doing additional work now, planning to do a full renovation of the lobby and first floor. And we have put some pressure and had some cooperation with our neighbors immediately around us on, I believe, Sherman and other parts of Lee. However, I'm having an issue with 115 Lee Avenue. I've written to you, Terry, about this and to you, Mayor Williams. I've written to the city council. I've written to our council member. I've written to the chain of command at DHCA. I have queried the maintenance staff I observe at the building to get the information for the owner and have made direct contact with him. The issue I'm having is that every other day, bulk trash piles in and around the area of the trash enclosure for this building. Not able to get a whole lot of recourse from it. I understand that DHCA is responsible for code enforcement in the county, but they are a rental property. They do have a rental license. They operate as a business in this county and in the city. And what concerns me is that as somebody who is trying to bring value to owners and value to residents, to have to continue to have the poor state of repair and the continual eyesore and public health issue related to their continual inability to address their bulk and regular trash concerns on a timely, normal basis, the residents in my building continue to suffer. And I'm just looking for some recourse, some satisfaction from the city to help us put some pressure on this landlord and frankly, others like him that are seemingly allowed to operate with impunity.
Mayor?
Yes?
You know, I've brought this issue to the attention of the city manager and the housing department on several occasions. And I wonder if it wouldn't do good to have a discussion of this type of problem on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. I see no reason why the city has to act so impotent in dealing with an issue like this when we have, you know, a constantly recurring problem. I forget the number. I think it is at 115 Lee Avenue where this is happening. And it's, you know, as soon as we do something to remove the trash that piles up around the dumpster, within days, it's pile, a new pile around there. I suspect, I don't know for sure, but I suspect that it could have to do with bedbugs in the building because quite frequently, it's, it's the mattresses and box springs that we see out there. But it seems like whether it be our contract with the county isn't, isn't sufficient to address the problem, whether we have authority that's beyond or whether we need to give our housing department authority beyond the contract with the county, needs to be something done so that we can hold the owner of that, that building accountable for his actions, his repeated actions. And I would like to, at the very minimum, see us go out there and clean it up and give him a bill every time, even if it, if it ends up just as a lien on the property. Eventually, we could own the property, you know, to the rate he's doing.
What you wish for.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention this evening. And maybe if you have any time to come in tomorrow afternoon during my office hours and we can meet with the city manager and talk about this.
All right, thank you.
Okay, other comments?
There also will be, now, next week's agenda is a vacant and blighted property initiatives discussion.
We could hijack that discussion for this?
Or not. But there is a relevant discussion next week.
Yeah.
What time would work for you tomorrow?
Between 3:00 and 4:00.
Okay, good.
Okay. Other comments on this item or on any other item? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. I'll just mention that I was gratified to see the article in today's Washington Post that recognized the work that Saford's Schools Coordinator, Lucy Nair, did on the, on the training on how to ride bicycles for kids who have some learning disabilities and physical disabilities.
It's been, it's been actually thrilling for the people who've worked on the camp to see, to see the activities. I was a little dismayed. My husband pointed out that the city of Tacoma Park's not mentioned anywhere in that very long article, but we'll...
But it keeps saying it was in Tacoma Park, Maryland.
It did say that, and it really is a fantastic...
So I, I read it very positively. I didn't see that lack.
I didn't either.
It was on WTOP yesterday.
I'm sorry?
It was on WTOP yesterday.
It's been on WTOP, and we've had a number of other people interested in it, so it's nice.
And I just wanted to remind folks that the annual national night out is Tuesday, August 4th, next door Presbyterian at Piney Branch Elementary School from 6:00 to 9:00. Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor. A few issues. I'll just support Councilmember Seaman's suggestion that we have some agenda time on the issue of, of code enforcement at apartment buildings, but in particular, waste. Adams Court is a building in Ward 2 that I think probably about once a month that I hear about, get sent pictures from residents of problems there. And so that's another place that comes up on this list. I'd also just mention, going back to an idea that, that we discussed a few weeks ago, which is if the city manager had sort of a list of priority projects per ward, that that might be another way we could help direct the, you know, for example, if we had a couple of months where we just had literally our own code enforcement staff go proactively to an apartment building every day, we might be able to address the problem that way through repeated citations. We've heard before about a resident who has asked whether city rec programs, which provide subsidy in terms of discounted class fees for seniors and for some youth, whether that could also apply to disabled individuals. And so the city manager could follow up on that issue and just provide some more background to me on whether we could provide a subsidy like that or if there are other reasons why we could not do so. That's an issue that I'm interested in. I wanted to bring up two policy issues for my colleagues' consideration. The first is that we have talked about the Nuclear Free Committee in the past and whether having a Nuclear Free Committee is the best approach or whether we could try to broaden the mission of the Nuclear Free Committee and, and associated language in our code to focus more broadly on sustainability, including nuclear weapons-associated provisions. And I just wanted to indicate that I, you know, continue to support that idea, that we, we look at essentially updating the mission of that committee and, and trying to give it a, you know, a broader focus on, on, on social issues and environmental issues, peace-war issues like, like, like a nuclear-free component. So that's one issue. The other is that, is our tree code, and this is a broader conversation, but I continue to think we need to make adjustments to our tree code. And in particular, the space that I'm interested in is whether we can find ways to be more accommodating of solar power on roofs while still protecting a tree canopy and having, or even having our tree canopy increased. And the ideas that I have in that space are focused mostly around, could we encourage planting of smaller stature trees, 30, 40-foot trees instead of oaks near houses? And some process to get there with, you know, the ways trees are replaced over, over time. I say that because, you know, the, the challenges of each decade and century change. And the real challenge that we face now in the country and in the world is one of the real challenges, is dealing with climate change and the realization that we will have, you know, microgrids of power and a lot more deployment of solar power in the near future, which is both a solution and an opportunity. I wish we could be more part of that solution than our current tree canopy allows. I sort of couple that with the conversations that I've had all too often of residents who sleep in their basements when we have big storms. And thinking about the houses that people purchased or built in, you know, 1920 or 1910 or 1930 in Tacoma Park when those trees weren't there. And the historic question, I just, I don't know that having 80-foot oak trees over a house is actually what it looked like historically either. So I think about the safety issue and I think about the, the environmental issue, the ability for people to produce power and save themselves money. And among all those three things, I've got to think there's a way that we can have a tree canopy, have a somewhat lower stature tree canopy around houses and still achieve our goals of protecting a tree canopy, wildlife habitat, and, and all the other things I mentioned. Thank you.
And I'll just add that one of the things that I'm trying to fit into an agenda is the general discussion of committees, which would address some of the things you're talking about.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm inclined to agree that one of the things when we talk about committees is that we have some committees that try to meet regularly but may not have very much to do. Can be very frustrating for those people who are on that committee. And it may be that the work that they do is actually, you know, really important, but it's so very intermittent. And so the idea, it's not new, not a new idea, but I think that we need to be going in that direction, thinking about how we can make the committees that we have as vital as possible so that people will stay with them and not give up and get frustrated or bored. I also support Councilmember Seaman's thoughts that he voiced a minute ago about trying to figure out a better way of dealing with, guess what I would call recalcitrant landlords? Could also call them stubborn or landlords or maybe they're...
Don't say the other words you could call them.
What?
I say, don't say the other words you could call them.
Okay, I won't. Thank you. I, I just think that sometimes we, there are property conditions on certain properties in our city where landlords have long since adopt, adapted to the reality that they're not going to get a lot of grief from the city or the county inspectors, for whatever reason. And, but our, our standards of living in, in the city are changing. Our expectations are, are rising. Good property owners continue to invest and upgrade their properties as they have to. So the ones that are irritants become more worse by contrast. And so it's a good idea for us to spend some time, as we're going to be doing next week, and continue to figure out how we can do a better job of enforcing the laws that are already on the books about, you know, like, like we heard from Mr. Landsman here a few minutes ago. So I strongly advocate our, our conversation in that direction. I want to announce to the residents of New Hampshire Gardens, it's the area bounded by Carroll Avenue, New Hampshire Avenue and Glen Side Drive, that WSSC, which has been promising to start utility work, a two-year project to replace all of the water mains and the water meters in the neighborhood, an area approximately, probably well over 400 single-family houses. That work's going to start next week. They, this, the utility informed our public works department. And so just deal with it. That's what we're going to have to do. It's going to be a mess, and it's going to take a long time. Also, I want to thank everybody, and particularly, I'll just go on record thanking our council members on the Fed Committee for their support, strong support for preserving the Prince, the Piney Branch Pool and operations. I just want to express publicly my... Pool and operations. I just want to express publicly my perplexity of that the, that it just seems that the county executive really does not understand or appreciate the need for this facility and how so critically important it is. It's just, it's just not a hole in the ground with water in it. It is, does a tremendous service to so many people in the city who simply are not going to be driving to pools, or cannot afford to join private pools around, around the community. So we just have to fight and continue to fight. And I ask residents in my ward earlier today to, you know, do what they can to let, let, let this county board know, the county council members know that we, how important this is. And finally, I, I want to say something very positive here. I had the opportunity on Thursday to visit the Lunch and Learn program and speak to an audience made up of close to 100 kids. All of the kids in this program are, are, come from families that meet the standards for the free lunch, breakfast and lunch program. I forget exactly what the terminology for it is in the public school system. And I had the opportunity after talking to, to the children, which range from age six to age 15. I think all of them, 100% of them were minority, as it turned out. I had a chance to, to walk through the entire school and, and meet with all of the faculty and people who were administering this program. I was tremendously impressed by the professional aptitude of, of the people who are running the Lunch and Learn program, and the seriousness and the, and the very high level of organization, and the, and the diversity of, I mean, the kids are getting educated, but they're being educated in a way that makes it fun. I mean, one of the programs there is teaching children, these, these youngsters, how to take apart a computer and put it back together again, which is incredibly valuable knowledge for anybody who has any interest in, in the mechanical, scientific, or digital aspects of our world today. There's another program that teaches kids, simply gives them time on the computer so they can learn how to use computers. And there's stuff, classes on reading and math, all targeted to the different age groups. These kids get to go twice a week to the Piney Branch Pool to swim, and that's a very critical component of it, because this is not, this is supposed to be camp. This is not just summer school. And of course, they also get the, the nutrition of having a free breakfast and a free lunch for their, for their, when they're, when they're at this, at this program, which is in the John Nevin's Andrews School, as many people already know. There, the program was way oversubscribed. Originally, they were hoping to reach as many as 75 kids. They ended up with 109. All but two of them live in the city of Tacoma Park, and the two that don't, I was told, live in Silver Spring but are enrolled because they're autistic. And they, I'm told, are doing really well with the other kids. So I could go on, except, except that I, and I really don't want to stop talking about it, because what I came away with is that, you know, we, as a city council and as a community, we want to do, spend money wisely, as best and most effectively in helping kids that come from disadvantaged situations, for, for all kinds of situations. But to me, looking at, at this Lunch and Learn program, I was so impressed, I thought, my gosh, I can't imagine how we can get a better bang for our buck than, than directly providing this, these advantages to these, to these youngsters during, during the summertime. And they genuinely, you know, I had a chance to talk to a lot of them. I spoke to them for about 15 minutes, and they listened very attentively. I assure you, when I stood up there before a group of kids who don't look like me, by the way, I, I don't know when I have ever been so nervous about speaking to a group. And in fact, I was so nervous, I wrote out everything I had at time that I wanted to say, to make sure that I wouldn't get, make, make a mess of things and have a bunch of disinterested youngsters. I managed to survive that task, and I just, was just thrilled to pieces to look at and observe the Lunch and Learn program. And I know our proposed grant is on the consent agenda tonight, and that's another reason I wanted to mention my experience with that program. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I'll mention just that I'm going to participate this coming Saturday in a program that is being conducted by the Difference Makers and the City of Tacoma Park's Lifelong Tacoma Program and the Tacoma Park Adventist Church to, to energy service for 55-plus residents of Tacoma Park. It's part of the Energy Challenge, where the group organized by Mr. Guring at Tacoma Park Middle School will go and swap out old bulbs for LEDs and, and so on. No training's necessary, you get it on the spot. That program's going to take place from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on this Saturday, the 18th of July. The meeting time is 1:30 or 1:45 at the Adventist Church. Additional volunteers are welcome, and people should contact the city's lifelong Tacoma coordinator, Karen Marisho. Her email address is lifelong@tocomaparkmd.gov. That's lifelong@tocomaparkmd.gov. Thanks.
Seeing no further council comments, I'll move to city manager's comments.
Thank you. Just, I wanted to give a heads up to the council and, and the community that over the next two to three weeks, city staff are going to be very busy. And, not that we're not always busy, but we've got a couple of things going on. One is it's audit time, so our staff in the finance department and in the HR department are preparing and working with the auditors for the next couple of weeks. We're also in the, in the heavy midst of software transition. Our financial system, our HR timekeeping system, our library ILS system, and our website, all over the next two to three weeks involve a heavy amount of staff training and conversion time. I know that there will be some times that, that there won't be full staffing available in the library. We are going to try to help people as we go through that. But I just wanted to let you know that, that the focus for the rest of July is to, to get a lot of these transitions taken place. And so some of the other kinds of things that we would normally be doing, we're not going to be able to do. Just want, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Next item is adoption of minutes. We have one set of minutes from July 6th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
Vote.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Mayo. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We will now move to our regular meeting, and the first item is a resolution affirming support for county funding of the Piney Branch Pool. Would somebody like to move a resolution?
Move it.
I heard Councilmember Schultz move it, Councilmember Stewart seconded. I was gratified to hear the report from Mr. Fleming about the committee discussion today at the Fed Committee. I wanted to point out that in the materials that I saw from, from their agenda packet, that they were talking about 15,000 maintenance also in the mix, so that it was, wasn't just 145,000, it was a total of 160,000. So I don't know if we want to change anything in, in what we say, because it was the operating funds plus the maintenance. And I was glad that Mr. Fleming pointed out that the next closest, or that somebody pointed out, I guess it was in the comments that Ms. Barclay was reading, that the next closest county pool facility is seven miles away.
It's inside, yeah. That's indoor.
That's indoor, and that there are not a whole lot of people who use the pool here who have the ability to just drive seven miles to another facility. And so I also thought it was important to remind the county council and remind our residents that our residents pay the recreation tax to the county, and we get very little in the way of services for the recreation tax. That's been part of an ongoing discussion on county revenue theft, better known as tax duplication. And so I think there are any number of reasons and any, any number of directions that we can come at this, to just remind folks that this is, this small amount of money really makes a big difference, and that taking it away has many repercussions and many ways that it touches on other issues that we have with the county and their allocation of expenditure money. So I guess, do we want to just maybe change something in that third whereas?
So you want 160,000 in operating and maintenance funds?
And maintenance, yes. And do people feel like we need to mention the recreation tax?
I would just say I don't feel like it necessarily helps us at this time, you know.
Drags in another issue?
Yeah. We don't know what the solution is that they would give to us as a consequence of that.
I would also argue against it for a different reason, which is that flooding around here, somewhere we have an MOU from several decades ago saying that the county will pay for this pool. So the recreation taxes doesn't really make any difference. They made a commitment outside of any tax questions.
Yeah, but then it always comes down to whether they authorize the expenditure, and that's what we're fighting here. So the, I would argue that the, the old MOU doesn't really carry much weight for them, so.
The key, the key point is that we're doing this.
I think so. So I was, I was just mentioning those points, but I wasn't necessarily saying we should add that in there. Just looking for advice.
Mayor, I realize I should recuse myself from this discussion and absent myself from it. I belatedly do that.
Okay. Other comments on this resolution? Was the, and I'll just say, the, the change I made was okay with the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
So those are friendly? Okay.
I have a related question, but I, I had asked the city manager maybe a week ago, and I'm guessing that we don't know anything about the status of this study that the county was doing of the fiscal plan there.
I don't know the status of that yet.
Yeah. Anyway, so the, the comment, and it's only related here, is that we need to start working on getting the capital funds in the next budget, the FY17 budget, for the renovation of the pool as soon as possible. Who knows what's going to come in that report, though.
I guess I would just add to that by saying, you know, if we actually knew what the costs were, when, how long it would take to renovate the pool or bring it up to whatever standards, and that it was actually going to happen, and, and that the pool was going to be renovated, I think we'd all feel a lot differently about this. But none of that information has been volunteered by anybody that I know of. So we're left with, to, to believe that once this pool's closed, its future is very dubious. That's all I wanted to say.
Other comments? Councilmember Mayo.
I'd just say that I strongly support our action on this again, in maintaining a really important county service and a part of the county where the county is supposed to provide services. It's disappointing to have to go through the battle a second time, and probably will be back here again next year. And I agree with other council members' comments that we should seek those funds to get this to be a priority project for capital improvement.
And good idea to start now.
And I would just add, given the residents who are here tonight and how quickly they were able to get together after we learned of this last week, I think goes to what Councilmember Grimes was saying, is that we have a number of residents who are very much ready to act and think about the future of this pool, so.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. That is five to nothing with one recusal. I'm assuming Councilmember Siemens can come back in. Next, we'll move to agenda item three, which is the second reading ordinance amending the elections code. We had first reading recently. Are there any changes in this second reading?
There were several typographical errors that were noted, and they've been corrected. The, okay. And there were several, where did I work on this? There were several other minor revisions. Bear with me just a second. Okay. Right. So at first reading, a question was raised as to what happens in the event that a candidate does not file a financial disclosure form. If the candidate fails to timely file the form, the candidacy is deemed withdrawn, and the candidate's name may not be placed on the ballot. In the event that a person is elected as a write-in, the financial disclosure must be filed or their position is declared vacant. So that, that question about not filing the financial disclosure statement, it really applies to a write-in candidate, because a candidate's name cannot be placed on the ballot if, if that form is not filed. So, so the, the questionable area is what happens if they win as a write-in and, and they can't take office unless that form is filed. Okay. And then the council discussed the campaign reports section, subsections D, E, and F. A campaign report, so a revision has been made. A campaign report must be attested to as complete and accurate to be deemed filed. Councilmember Grimes had suggested that. If a deficiency on the form is noted by the city clerk, the filer has two weeks from the date of the written notice to correct the deficiency. If the corrected report is not filed, or if there is a deficiency in the report, late filing fees are then assessed and continue to be assessed up to the maximum amount until the corrected campaign report is accepted and filed. So, yeah. So those were the two changes that were made, the more, two slightly substantive changes that were made since first reading. And council had adopted the ordinance at first reading as written, so you would want to now vote on this amended ordinance if you're, vote to accept these amendments, perhaps? Yeah. If you choose to accept them.
So the, so the mover could move to, could move the resolution as amended from first reading?
You could do that, too, I suppose. Yeah.
So I'll call for somebody who wants to move it.
And then we're going to discuss it after it's moved?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Moved is amended?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Mayo, second by Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Mayo, did you want to discuss?
I just have a brief point. I thank the clerk and, and the commission for putting together the edits. The, the one additional thing I would flag, and I'm not, unless there's significant council interest in it, I'm not going to propose an amendment now, but on page six of 16, line 29, just noting that ballot questions have to use the words for and against. So in other words, we have, we have ranked choice voting for candidates, but we don't have ranked choice voting for ballot questions. So if you had a ballot question that said, whatever it would be, it's, you know, whatever, pick the, pick the complex issues that are often brought up in ballot questions, and they're often not binary issues. You want A or B. It's, sometimes there's, there's a C. Someone would like, this is their best choice, but they'd settle for this, and they'd really not stick with that. I believe that, and I think the clerk would correct me if I didn't say this, talked to the city attorney, and that same language is also in our charter. So we can't make this change in the code. But I just flag it because I had never thought of it before, and I think of the ranked choice voting as being a strong system. And so the inability to use it for ballot questions, which in some ways are more complicated than candidates, not that you're, not all beautifully complicated creatures, but, but I just flagged it because I hadn't been aware of it. Thank you.
Interesting, yeah. Interesting, yeah.
Other comments? This is the second reading. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We will move to our next item, which is a first reading ordinance authorizing FY 2016 budget amendment number one. And I'm assuming that city manager would like to run through this?
Yes. After the fiscal year, every year, there's a number of items to carry over, and the bulk of this budget amendment number one involves projects that were not able to be completed by June 30, that were in the budget for FY 15. Some of these are very close. The purchase of an asphalt heater, which delivery was delayed. There was some trash and recycling containers, again, delivery was delayed. Decorative streetlight replacements. The integrated library system is just waiting the third payment, the final payment now. Completion of the Halton Lane Gateway Project. There's actually a slight, I guess, continuation that can be done with that landscaping project with the funds that were available. Completion of planned public arts projects. The money that was set aside for the community kitchen and the African immigrant refugee foundation, community grants, and a code enforcement printing project. Similarly, in the special revenue fund, there was carryover of $3,000 for the Maryland Bike Ways Program, $975 in the CDBG funds for the African immigrant refugee foundation, and $28,701 in CDBG funds for the Flower Avenue Green Street Project. And the two other items are a transfer to move halftime position from the Housing and Community Development Department to my office, and monies to help renovate the finance department. Not sure why this number was not in the budget. Nevertheless, this is changing the floor, getting the walls painted, putting in some new cubicle space that can accommodate more people in that same small space. A door has to be moved for that to be accommodated, but there's not other significant changes. And so, the facilities maintenance reserve is an appropriate fund for those kinds of expenses. This would be budget, this would be the first reading, and then the second reading would be on the 27th.
Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
Moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Schultz. Any discussion of this item? Councilmember Mail?
Just a comment. A while ago during the budget process, we discussed the question of appropriate reserve fund balances and having enough money in our general fund account to be able to pay bills throughout the year. The city manager raised the issue that while at the end of the fiscal year or the projected end, we might have X, you know, million dollars, that there might come a time in the beginning of the year before revenue comes in, when our expenses would rise and our revenue would go down. And so, you'd see a dip in the balance. And so, I just ask that at this point, because this was the point when you said it might occur, if you could provide the monthly bank statements or some more update on running balances during a period before significant 2016 revenue starts coming in, or 20?
I can give some information. Bank balances aren't the appropriate thing, but certainly we can. Also, I will be giving the financial statement, quarterly financial report on the 27th, and that has a lot of that information in detail.
Thank you. And just one other comment, which is that I support the city manager's project or proposal to move the position.
Thank you.
So, just commenting on that.
Any other comments? What I want to do is use a roll call vote on this, just because budget amendments require five votes in favor, not the usual four. And so, even if we do a roll call at first reading, then we know that we have taken care of that requirement. So, if the clerk would please call a roll.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So, that passes with six votes.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. We have three items on that. Single reading ordinance authorizing a grant agreement with Adventist Community Services for the Lunch and Learn, resolution providing for appointments to SICOLTA, and a resolution providing for appointments to Arts and Humanities Commission. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Mail. We have a single reading ordinance. Will a court please call a roll?
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. That passes unanimously. That takes us to our discussion of state legislation to be proposed to the Maryland Municipal League. This is the Legislative Action Requests, and this is something that we talk about every year and usually have the discussion a little earlier, but I know it's no problem because they always accept late filed requests. So, I know that Councilmember Stewart came up with one, and the city manager had one. Maybe the city manager wants to just lead off on this.
The standard process for this is that each municipality can submit up to three requests that go into the hopper with the Legislative Committee of MML. Eventually, in the Fall Conference, there's a choice about what the priorities will be for MML. For these requests, it usually is better if it's something that specifically helps municipalities across the state and that hasn't been voted down multiple times in the state legislature. And so, those are things that, you know, that in terms of making it more likely for the legislative committee to support it. The one that I added here is something that may be not necessarily a Tacoma Park priority, but I think it certainly is a municipal MML priority, and that has to do with the unfunded pension liability. And in this particular case, both MAKO and MML have written, have written this joint letter to say that the way that the state was figuring this out was economically harmful to both counties and municipalities, putting some liability, increased liability on the penalty for liability on counties and municipalities that have no say in how the pension fund is managed.
Are we in some kind of bad risk position here in Tacoma Park regarding this liability?
No, but it adds more money that we have to kind of put forward. And so, one of the, one of the points here is to, you know, reduce, the way that the letter from the analyst's note is that the way that the state's done this has inflated the apparent unfunded liability by about a third. And that's something that, you know, is out there. Is it a huge issue for us? Perhaps not. But I do think that it's something that, since this is the beginning of dealing with this, I'd like to get it straight. The other thing that the Councilmember Stewart has brought up has to do with utilities, companies, and state highway, and I'll let her explain those. I did have Jesse pass out the language that we had, Resolution 2011-31, that had to do with utilities, undergrounding of wires, requiring rapid road restoration, removing old utility poles within a short amount of time, and removing deadlines from poles promptly when cable or utility service is discontinued. One of my pet peeves is simply that lines don't have the name on it of the company. So, if there's a line that's down, you have to have somebody come and identify that it fits Verizon or whatever. And it could easily have something that says every X number of feet, you have a line, it has some identification on it. In any event, there's many things that we could put in the list, but Councilmember Stewart, I thought, had some items that hadn't been covered in the past as well.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Yes, I think what we had had in the Resolution 2011 are additional, but also really good items. What I had submitted to council this morning was more of coordination and communication issues. I think all of us sitting up here have heard from our constituents, and I know city staff have time and time again about the lack of communication and coordination that causes great distress and disruption in residents' lives. In addition, the environmental impacts of repaving streets, pulling up sidewalks that had just been done, the cost to that is really just unjustifiable, I think, in my mind. And I think we should, as a state, look at how we can have better coordination and just better communication between the utilities and state highway when work is being done. And so, that's basically the gist of it.
Between utilities, state highway, and local government?
Mm-hmm, and then, yes.
Okay. Are there other ones that people wanted to put forward so that we get all of those on the table?
Assuming that the three that are in the document already are part of what we're discussing?
Those were simply mentioned as the past.
Well, I remain interested in all three of those.
Okay.
Can we get any traction on the Innovation Fund? If I remember Mayor Williams correctly, you described it as there was a lot of interest in that by MML, but ultimately, it wasn't one of the ones that was picked. Is that?
Right. Yeah, it was, gee, good idea, and it didn't go beyond that.
I like the idea of bringing the utilities in here, and frankly, it's more immediate to our residents than the Innovation Fund is, which is, of course, very forward-looking. So, there's nothing wrong with the Innovation Fund, but it's a here and now versus great things later, and I don't have an answer to that. I'm just saying that.
Councilmember Schultz?
Did you have? I'd push a button, but I don't remember.
Oh, well, all right. No, never mind. Not Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Mail, did you have other comments?
I do. So, comments rather than ideas? Can I discuss the five proposals we have before us, or do you want me to put out new ideas?
Oh, no, we got enough new ideas.
Okay, great. I appreciate the background that the city manager provided on that issue. I guess it does worry me in the sense that if the state inflates the liability or the apparent liability for a city or any municipality, then you could imagine some future where some city would decide it wanted to leave the state fund, and then they would be in an argument about whether the state wanted them to pay for more or take on, take with them more of the liability. And so, I would, and not that we have any plans to...
And that was just the argument that we had to deal with when we left, when our police left the state pension system.
That's right, we did have that.
Yeah. So, I certainly am, I think it's a bad policy for the state to not do it accurately in the first place, and then there's some real consequences. However, on that idea, and to some extent, on the highway user revenue question, fully supportive, but I just wonder whether MML isn't going to, going to put its darndest into getting that pension revenue issue resolved, regardless of whether we put it in our three. So, I started thinking about trying to, you know, keep cards that we want to use.
And if I might interrupt, I mean, also with the pension one, I mean, the MAKO's is a bigger dog, and they might be able to fight that one better.
Yeah, so totally supportive. I really appreciate the background. If there's any, like, resolutions, anything we can do separately than putting it in our list, I'd happily do that. I remain interested in the Innovation Fund, just because, again, I'm thinking about the governor we have and the way that that could play out with a Republican governor's house and the legislature. And so, if there's any chance of getting something new in, that's an idea that's sort of pushing, you know, it's pushing a little, to a little bit different space. My comment on tax, on double taxation, is that happy to support this as described here. I also just wanted to open the question of whether we would want to support, as opposed to just what's written here, you know, a study, an independent audit of, you know, across the state, where is double taxation happening? The fairness issue of looking just at income taxes as opposed to income taxes and other sources of revenue, given...
I mean, just property taxes?
Given, sure, yes, yeah, just property taxes, given, as the mayor has frequently said, the limited options that cities, municipalities have for raising revenue. So, I often, I hate the idea of pivoting to a study, but as part of the package, I don't know if that could be useful, particularly if it was done independently. And then, on the issue of utilities, a couple of questions come to mind. One is whether the Pepco-Xelon merger is maybe a, you know, more real chance to get some of those things, if we still have any opportunity to try to influence the list of demands that local and state and county government are putting on utilities as part of that merger. And the second one is that I just worry that the way it's, what we have so far, whether it really has enough teeth. So, this is such a complicated issue, I can only imagine how many incredibly overpaid lawyers are involved with each utility defending its current liability for any wire, any pole, you know, anything like that, and just how complicated it could get and how easily they could find some loophole to not have to do anything new. I just, my concern is just making sure we have something that really is, is, would stick.
Right. Well, I think that one of the, one of the issues here is that you have to have a stick as part of this, as part of the legislation. You don't, how, something's done within 90 days or that kind of thing, and I think that's important. The other thing I want to mention about whether it's HUR or tax duplication or Innovation Fund or any of these, even if they're not put in as an LAR request, doesn't mean we don't pursue them both legislatively and with other entities within the state government or elsewhere. And so, it's always helpful direction to staff about what positions you want to take, even if it doesn't end up being one of the three that you choose to go forward to MML on.
Could I ask just a follow-up question? Delegate Hucker was a reliable, you know, give me a bill on the utilities and I'll run with it kind of delegate, and I don't know whether any of our current delegates have sort of staked ground out on being champions of utility-related issues. Is that clear yet?
I don't know, I don't know about that.
When there was an earlier one about the polls, Senator Raskin was the, was the lead.
Well, Senator Raskin can help very much, but, but that's, in terms of the delegates, I'm not sure.
But, yeah, but Senator Raskin was the sponsor of the bill that was in maybe two years ago.
Okay.
Let me just follow up on a couple of things that you said. On the, you had a question about whether with the, with the Pepco-Xelon merger, whether there was a chance to get some things in that way. My sense of the timing on the progress on that merger is that that window is closed. I think the, the opportunity to try and get some coordination among the utilities and state highway administration and local government is there. I think that might be a good idea to pursue, and I think it's something that most municipalities have some experience with, some negative experience with, and so, they might be willing to fall in behind this as an effort. I think the first one that's listed in the blue sheet, the highway user revenue, that's going to continue to be a, an effort that MML is going to follow through on. You know, that's sure to be one of the three priorities or four priorities that the Legislative Committee moves forward. So, I think whether we put it on our list or not doesn't particularly matter, because even if it's on nobody's list, they're going to do it. The tax duplication one, the progress that was made last year was that Frederick County got their local bill through, and the, what the legislators telegraphed was, if you can do local bills, you have a much better chance of success than a statewide bill. So, I feel like the effort to push this forward on a statewide basis was there. Last year, I think we lost by one vote in the committee. It was like 15 to 14, that this did not become more of an effort, but it was put, it was pushed forward by a couple of us anyway, and particularly when Delegate Crim's bill went in, and she put in both the statewide bill and the local Frederick the statewide bill and the local Frederick County bill in coordination with the county executive Jan Gardner. And so, there's momentum there, there's a, I think there's a real willingness on the part of, who knows who's gonna be on the legislative committee, but depending on who's on there, a real willingness to continue to push this, and I don't know whether it's gonna turn into basically saying that the best way to go is a local bill. So, I think it's worth pushing, putting something in there to try and continue to push it, but I think it'll probably go in that slightly different direction.
Mayor Williams, can you just, the Frederick bill, was the resolution for them? Was it helpful, they got a good bill that...
Yes, yes, they, they got the bill in Frederick County that we wanted.
Well, that's, that's a precedent.
And, and so, a local bill might be the answer, but you have to have the cooperation of the county to get the local bill, and I'm not sure that's in the cards, but the issue has to remain on the table, or we lose the, any remaining momentum that we have, and so, I just feel like that's an important one to keep going with. And I think the unfunded pension, pension liability that the city manager alerted us to has a real impact on us. We said in the budget deliberations this year that we, I believe at the end in reconciliation, we wanted to put some money toward increasing what we pay toward the police pension, and we said...
Hundred thousand.
And we said if we wanted to, if we had other extra monies that we could find, that that was an important thing to do, it would be crazy to put that toward the police pension and lose an equivalent amount on the, on the other employees' pension. So, it's something that I think is, is a good issue to bring to MML. Yes, they may work on it no matter what in conjunction with Mako, but I think it's, it's a good thing to bring before the committee, because a lot of people may, even though they may be affected, they may not realize it, because it didn't, it didn't come forward to the membership.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. I found it fascinating that, about how, how the letter was dealt with, and that we got it from our, you know, our advisors, not from MML.
Yeah, so, it should have been something that we saw, and we haven't. So, I think it needs to be aired in that, in that forum. All I can think of is jurisdiction, I knew one right. So, so my sense is that the, the infrastructure coordination, the pension liability, and the tax duplication are the highest priorities for me. Councilmember Schultz, you remembered what it was that you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I remember why I pushed the button. Plus, one other thing. The question about the pension liability, it would seem to me that, I mean, well, the question really is, does, does that directly affect this redistribution, affect our balance sheet at the end of the, at the end of the year?
I don't think it does, but I'd need to get better advice. It may just, it may just affect how, how it looks, you know, I mean, it's...
Well, that's the thing, I mean, whether it affects just sort of how it looks is one thing, if on the other hand, it makes it, it actually affects our balance sheet because some...
Well, this is the whole, this is the whole new Gatsby stuff.
Remembering that with Gatsby 68, it comes from below the line to above the line, it moves up on our financial...
You'll see that.
Yeah, and I, that was, yeah, I know that, that's...
And I'm not convinced it might not affect our bottom line.
I don't know if it will affect actual cash out, but I think that it certainly will affect how we look.
Yeah, and to that, if, to, to the, the fact that there's a chance that that might be the case, until we find out...
Well, I think, I mean, the fact that our financial advisors, you know, affirmatively raised this with us.
Right, then, you know, I have to say that this has got to be a priority. Now, if they say, no, this is just sort of a nominal shift that will not be apparent, or, you know, will not affect our, our balance sheet, or at least it'll be footnotes to, to explain it away, or something like that, okay, that might be different. But otherwise, I would say that this has got to be an important, important issue for our city, and it's important for us to voice, voice our concern. The other thing is that with regard to the, the, the tax duplication that the mayor was just talking about, basically, I agree with his, with his summary of the whole thing. I also sort of feel that we've, we've been the leader in Montgomery County on this issue, and as a consequence, we've always been present on the MML legislative issues with, with this issue, and trying to educate others and learn from others about this. I just feel like, even, even though it may be something that the MML is going to work on anyway, I sort of feel like we, if we don't put this on our list, then people are gonna say, gosh, what happened to Tacoma Park? Why aren't they out there carrying the flag on this thing? That's something I'm concerned about.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. So, I don't think, Mayor, I generally agree with your, I think your three points there. For inclusion, you didn't include highway user revenues. I don't think I heard you say it, it seems that Governor Hogan is more sympathetic to our position. Is that part of your reasoning?
He, he has appeared to be more sympathetic. I trust but verify.
Well, things can always change, depending on the state's revenue situation, and, you know, the governor's apparently learned a lot in the last few months about how to do budgets and all that.
And sometimes not necessarily in the best direction.
Yeah. Regarding the infrastructure item, what I didn't see here, and the city manager reminded me of this in a comment, is that the concerns here apply equally to the counties, although in a more limited sense, that, you know, if you have some large, through a county that's not through a residential area or through a shopping district, then, you know, maybe the coordination isn't as required, but, but certainly, looking to some kind of alliance with Mako, the association of counties would be a natural here, so, and that would strengthen the position pursuing something like this. So, I would suggest thinking about rewording here to accommodate bringing the counties to the table as well. Regarding the utility polls, it's my recollection that former councilmember Valerie Irvin got through the county council, maybe three or four years ago, a bill that required the utilities to relocate the wires to new poles for the removal of the old poles within six months, and that's not widely observed, but it's on the books, and I believe applies here in Tacoma Park. So, that's just a remark, you know, sometimes we have tools that we're not making use of, although, to the mayor's comment, that you need a stick on these things, if there's no stick, you can try as hard as you want to make use of them, and they're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to get anywhere with them. My last comment, since someone brought up the idea of, well, things that are not for the MML, but that should be on our legislative agenda, I want to mention one thing in particular, and that ties into the next part of today's meeting, this evening's meeting, which is the idea of approaching our legislators in D-20 formally about exploring state bond funding for library renovation. I know that that's not a slam dunk for everyone up here, that we should be moving forward at that point, but I would hope there's some majority support for that exploration. That's not an MML thing, of course. Thanks.
Councilmember Grimes, could I just ask a question on that? My brief understanding in the past of bond issues like that is that it tends to be for a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, is it actually possible?
It would be a few hundred thousand dollars.
And then we would pay it back over some period of time?
No, we have to match...
They're called bond bills, but they're grants.
Okay.
With a matching...
There's a matching requirement, so, so, for instance, the...
That's what's always confused me, I've always thought of them as bonds, so it didn't make any sense to just get a hundred thousand dollars in a bond.
Well, the state borrows money to fund them, so the state is issuing a bond, and we have to match, but we don't pay it back. So, to give you an example, the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, where the community commercial kitchen got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the senate side and a hundred thousand dollars on the House of Delegates side, or maybe it was vice versa, but in any case, that gives you the idea of the owner of magnitude, so, you would fund only a fraction of a project like this, the library renovation, but, but, you know, it's something.
Unless, and I don't know how you, how you qualify to get in this, whether it's only for education or whether it's other things, but there was the money that Washington Adventist University got, 2.4 million, and it was buried deep in a, in a bill.
That's, yeah, that's a special line for education items, right, and there's a similar one for hospitals. You know, we did get...
And does the library qualify somehow?
I don't think so.
Given our library status.
No.
As I think people know, I had very preliminary discussions with Sheila Hickson and Jamie Raskin about their willingness to fire, file bills, and they indicated they would be, but that's very preliminary. And, and, you know, that's based on when we last went to them for money from this kind of source, and at that point, you know, it's relatively early in the game, at that point, they weren't hearing competing demands from their constituents.
We also did receive many hundreds of thousands of dollars for this, for this building, so, I mean, through bond bills, so, sometimes it's larger sums.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I agree with moving forward on the tax duplication issue, on the infrastructure piece that I've proposed, I'm completely open to suggestions. This was actually written fairly quickly this weekend in preparation for tonight's meeting, I think, including Montgomery County, I mean, excuse me, the county's language there is an excellent idea. I did have some language in here, but we can strengthen it in terms of sticks about mandatory and requirements, and I'm open to whether or not we include the utility polls and other things, but if we think that's taking care of other places and gonna muddy this up, I'm fine, keeping this more on coordination and communications. And I have to say, I'm just, for the third option, I'm torn between the innovation fund and the pension issue. I think I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from folks on this, I could go really either way, and would like more discussion on which of those.
Councilmember Schultz, you had another comment?
Well, yes, with regard to the bond bill for, for the, using the bond bill for the library, I mean, at first, it sounds like an obvious thing, that why wouldn't you do it? But obviously, there's only so much that we get out of the state of Maryland in bond bills on an annual basis, and by, by sort of saying we want to use it for the library, there might be, that means we're not gonna have that money to be used for something where it really would make a difference. That's just, just a thought, I mean, it's not really more than that. With regard to the innovation fund, I guess I, I just don't really understand what I'm reading here, it just says, which municipalities could receive grant funding to undertake innovative efforts to advance one or more high priority goals of the state of Maryland? And lord knows what high priority goals of the state of Maryland constitute. Is that something that you just, we, we get to decide that?
Councilmember Mail has some comments on this.
Yeah, I mean, we could get more specific, but the way that we had proposed it last year was, one, it was a municipal grant program, so, you know, that's the basic idea, it's money that all cities could compete for. Two, focused on cities that want to find a way to do something that is important in the state, but do it their own way. And I think that idea has some merit in terms of trying to pitch it to a Republican audience, right? Like, local, local...
So, in effect...
Local solutions know best. In terms of what it would work on, you could, you could describe it more specifically, but I just think that there's a lot of established in policy and legislation state goals, and so, you'd broadly let municipalities apply for money for achieving any goal, would be one way to do it, or the governor could set the fund off in a particular year to do, to do, you know, one or more things, to work on Chesapeake Bay or something else.
So, high priority goals of the state of Maryland might be sort of a euphemistic phrase to make it sound like this is the governor's idea, when in fact, we would sort of say, as a municipality, we need to, we need help in buying and renovating an vacant structure on New Hampshire Avenue, for example, and it'll be done to do X, Y, et cetera, and Z. Okay, I get it now, thank you.
For, for next Monday, should we just bring something with five paragraphs, and then you guys vote on them, and pick at that time, do a straw vote about which three go on the forum?
Or we could see if we have agreement now on some...
Whichever, we do have another agenda item that we want to spend some time on.
Yes, I know. Let me just say on the, on the, kind of, pension liability, innovation fund, if, if people are thinking about, well, gee, which one of those, my thought is that rightly or wrongly, we're more in a position of fighting against grabs of our money, and that somehow, in my mind, that takes precedence over things that we really like to do, and I hate to lose sight of, the ability to, to do those things that are the good ideas, that really are important, and I, and my sense of the, the way that the legislative committee looks at these things is that they kind of will come at it from that direction. I, you know, I remember the general sense of the innovation fund idea last year, which was that we're certainly no opposition, but it didn't rise to the level of, oh my God, we've got to protect X.
Right.
And so, that's why I was thinking that it would be a good one to put there, to kind of, for the overall effect on MML. The net result in the end may be not much different, but I think it's important to kind of stake out that territory at, at MML, to make sure that people understand, so that if MML is working on it, even if it isn't one of the top priorities, that's a, that's a legislative priority for the league, that it's easier to educate other municipalities and coordinate better with Mako on how important that is and how to make it work.
And if I could just weigh in on that as well? I mean, my sense is that the innovation fund is an idea that we proposed, and if it's not on our list, it won't be on anyone's list, so it will truly just go away. I've been surprised in the past, not generally in a bad way, of all the bills that MML ends up endorsing and lobbying on, things that we didn't pick as our list of three things that municipalities voted on that weren't part of the process, and I think that's, that's as it should be, because legislature is fluid, and I think generally, MML picks out things that are, are important, that we didn't necessarily anticipate. And I just can't imagine that this issue isn't something with, especially with Mako behind it, that will get resolved, I would just expect it would get resolved before the legislation, legislative season even begins, that, that there would be a resolution to it, because it's just clearly such a faulty thing to do from an auditor's perspective. You could imagine, I could imagine the auditor saying, we're gonna give, we're not gonna give an A to, you know, a star to all the cities on this issue, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna mess with the state's, you know, bond issues, it's gimmicky accounting. I mean, this could just blow up in lots of bad ways for them, and way beyond us. And so, I just can't think that, I wouldn't, I would think that MML would prioritize this no matter what, but I also think the issue is, it's such a bad way to resolve something, it just, it just won't go further, I mean...
But it's already gone for the last fiscal year.
But that was, that was like a demo, that's, they literally did the, did that, did it that way to just, to, you know, do a dry run, and so, they, you know, I think that was actually, and I think the letter complements the state on being transparent about that.
So, if folks want to ruminate on this, and we'll come back with the, with the straw poll morphing into a resolution next week?
Yeah, sure.
Fine.
Good. Okay, then we will take a short break and move over to the Isaiah Room for the final discussion, which will be the continued discussion of library renovation options.
It's final discussion coming back here?
We'll finish over there. Take your stuff with you. Take your stuff with you. So this is a follow-on from the last session we had, which was over in the library itself. It's a, 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 a plan to talk about things and possibly make some observations or changes or questions.
Right, what we're, what we're hoping to get is direction from you on, on some key components, whether it's connections, or how big the footprint should be, or these various things, so that we can refine and get a concept design that we then kind of focus on. Because right now, we have three, three concept designs. One is keeping the outside footprint, but remodeling on the interior. One has a small increase in, you know, some increase in size one way, the other has a increase in size in a couple of different places. In the discussion that we had, walking around the library, there were some questions about why, you know, how much space is needed for certain kinds of uses, what, there was questions about could we go to the second floor, or some interest about how does the area around the computer room work? And I guess I'd like to narrow some of those comments down and get a sense about how people feel. Ultimately, we're going to want to know if there's, if there's interest to, to continue to move to a refined design, and essentially, a detailed engineering design on a concept or not. If we are moving towards a concept, that concept design then can be talked with the community, talked about with the community more, because one of the things, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in, about the interior of the building, and maybe, you know, does this affect a tree or not? But really, how does it look, how would it function, has not, hasn't gone more than just kind of general conversations with the community, and taking it to that next step about agreement about, what does something generally look at? Are there some components that you don't want to see definitely, that you do want to see definitely, that we can then incorporate into a revised concept?
And can you make it clear whether what we're looking at here is what we've had before, or whether is there something here that's different?
There's some differences.
Greg McMyers here.
Nice to see everybody again. What I was asked to do is kind of bring some of the earlier concepts, so that you might see where the, why we have ended up where we have, that we went through a whole series of iterations of ways in which the library could be renovated, and these are sort of in chronological order. I think the other thing that I wanted to point out, and of course, you can't see this, but this is one of your original drawings of this building. And this is the library right here, and here is the infamous octagon outside the library. And one of the things that has come up over and over again is, how do you connect the community center with the library? And how do you make some of these rooms that are adjacent to the library, part of the library? And is there really a division between the community center and the library, or can you integrate it somehow? And I thought, this is not one of our drawings, but I pulled this out of the original construction document set for the community center. And you can begin to really see, especially if you get close, how the circulation works. And people have talked about the fact that you have to go down these two small little corridors to get to the library. And is there a way, quite frankly, of integrating this a little bit more? Interestingly enough, and I haven't really gone through every sheet of the, of the drawings, but there is a, a stair right smack dab in the middle of this area, which I suspect was part of the reason why there wasn't a direct connection. But generally, if one were to do a diagram, you would probably draw a straight line between, you know, the, the reception area and this cross corridor that goes out to your parking in the library. And you would have, if nothing else, from an architectural standpoint, connect the dots, and simply say, gee, I want a variety of functions to all be accommodated within the shell of this building, whether it's a gym, a theater, a library, or recreational functions. Now, without undoing and redoing some of what you have in the community center, the next step was, you know, how can you begin to, if nothing else, connect the library with some of the spaces that are adjacent to the library, and are actually operated by the library, but are not in the library? And, you know, if in fact, you have quite a different function that's in the building, you might simply just accept the fact that you're going to go around the corner and come in to a library, and you may or may not ever be able to have that visual connection or a strong circulation connection between the two. If you, you know, were upset about that enough and said, I don't care, I'm going to, you know, demolish this area and connect these, it doesn't mean, I mean, the stair doesn't have to go away, you know, you could do that. But that may, but that's not really totally germane to the design of the library, but it's a, an issue that has come up more than once about the relationship with the library, because obviously, the library keeps growing in this direction, and it may have an impact. So, yes.
Yeah, I mean, just in, in that vein, the, the lower of the, of the corridors, if, if that could just be straightened out, then you could at least have a visual connection from that, you know, so if you can just go straight there and enter straight through, or you see that it's the library, even if you just are looking at a window, but people are sitting there reading or doing something on computers, then I think, you know, I mean, I just had somebody a little bit ago ask, well, where's the library? Because you can't see it in the building until you're there.
Yes, sir.
And the other thought that I have looking at that is, you've got the school rooms and the octagon.
Yes.
But who's to say that shouldn't be more of the library and have those computers somewhere else?
Correct, correct. Or as part of the library. It could be their own.
Yeah, not necessarily right the first time.
And that's kind of where we ended up physically, the last time we were doing this, was we ended up in that space, and we were starting to look at, gee, how does this space work and happen?
Correct, correct. And I think that, make it interesting point, here's the reception desk right here, and yes, you could probably straighten out this corridor and capture the exterior walkway that is, it doesn't go anywhere, and as far as we can tell, is not required for fire exiting. We have never been able to find an egress plan for this building, in terms of the code analysis, that generally, you find on page one of our, set of architectural documents. So, without going through a whole code analysis, we don't know what was done, but we don't believe that's a, a legal exit. But you could come into the library here. In both cases, you have a different floor level realized between the library and the rest of the building. There's about a 10-inch difference in elevation between, between the two. I don't know whether it's really, and this, this is the plan of the existing library, I just have it here for reference. I'd be more than happy to go through the derivation of, of some of the, the options that we had developed, the majority of which actually closed off and separated the library from the rest of the building, until we met and, you know, so we really need that connection. And so-
And actually, Terry, if you look at the fourth page that's in this package, it was one of the early versions that had the computer rooms in, in the library space. It took the, took part of what was now the, what is currently the computer area, made it staffed, but it was physically then really walled off from the rest of the computer, from the rest of the community.
Yeah, a lot of what we did, to be quite honest with you, because of this 10-inch difference, is we began to investigate originally, what can you do with this area and make it part of the library, assuming that we would have to leave some of these spaces, or relocate, for instance, the senior center on the other side of the, of the corridor. And so what we tried to say is, could you expand the library, in effect, by, by getting these spaces in the library? And the things that we began to look at were, all right, could you put the staff up here to turn more of the library over to public access space? Or could you basically make this a computer area that perhaps you could see from the other side, but was part of the library? So a few of the early options began to investigate that, because we were not exactly tuned in to the connection aspect. Some of the latter options, options four to six, began to investigate the connection. Until ultimately, you know, we developed the last three, and in all the cases, the, the library was, was connected, whether it was to take the existing building and, and do what you could do within the existing space, or, hold on here for a second. And we did talk about extending the corridor, but I have to admit, we did not take advantage of the visual connection, to the point where, you know, these became computer spaces, but you could walk through, and we took away some of the walls, this was glass, so that you weren't going down this sleuth way into the library. And in some cases, the fact that it was elevated by 10 inches was sort of nice, it was a little bit of an overlook, if you will, and you could take advantage of that, and then put a small ramp or stairs. And we began then to investigate expanding in that direction. You can see, we did not, in this case, make that connection, simply because at the time, we were unsure about the code implications of that. So, I think the last time we met, and we tried to investigate the corners of the library and illustrate the implication of, of expanding the library in this direction, or expanding the library, and these plans of the last three that you have in your packet, or expanding the library in this direction, with some in that direction. In all cases, we continued to have a way of getting into the, into the library from the community center, but none of them really connect from a visual standpoint. And so I think that's where we stopped, and thought, all right, let's really discuss this with you as a group, about how important that is, how far, I'm assuming, rightly or wrongly, that you would not want to make that connection and, and reconfigure this part of the building. It's easier to do this, but frankly, if you do expand the library, you're going to be, you're still going to have the difference in elevation, but you'd be coming into the library in a little different area. library in a little different area. And perhaps that's something that is important to you, may not be important. And those are some of the things I think we'd like to sort of listen. What is important to you folks as a group in terms of, what do you think would make an expanded library better? What are the sense of values in terms of an expansion in one or the other direction or both directions? In terms of both landscaping, in terms of the artwork on the outside of the building? When we developed the program and developed a optimum size, if you will, none of, none of the options that we've shown you actually get to that option, optimal size, but they're getting close. But by the same token, I don't think you really want to go any farther than we've shown you. Because I think that then you really have an impact, both on the landscaping, on the street. And I would not recommend you go much further. I mean, you've got some real constraints in terms of the stair that goes down to the parking area. Why it's there, I think I said to you last time, I have no clue. It doesn't seem to serve as a whole lot of function. I don't think it's necessary for a code standpoint. But I think that part of the process, anytime you investigate ways of expanding any public facility, is to try to illustrate lots of different ways that you could do, simply to begin to get a reaction and to find out, you know, pro and con of what makes sense and what doesn't make sense, or does it even make sense at all? So, yes, sir?
I think one of the things we did talk about on our little tour that you haven't mentioned tonight, and that is a little bit of expansion on the backside between the library and the community center.
Correct. And, and that's something we've investigated. We sort of had finished that process at that time, but yes. And especially...
On the backside.
I'm sorry.
Parking lot.
On that side. Actually, we've talked about both of them. But, and I think one of the things that, that we have found in any time we, we expand an existing building, is that if you can expand in one area, I think I said this last time, it's probably the most economical way of, of expanding. If you could find one chunk of space and you touch one or two walls on the outside and expand, that's great. If you expand something four or six feet, it becomes pretty cost prohibitive. You're not getting a whole lot. One of the things that we talked about, and this was a value judgment from us and not from you folks, which may or may not be correct, was that because the, the staff and, and materials come in in one area, it made sense to keep it. You have a lot of mechanical equipment at this point, it made a certain amount of sense to keep it. But certainly, by the time you get down to this area, maybe that makes some sense to expand here. And I think you'll see in, in some of the earlier schemes, we actually had flipped and made the public, the adult area here and the children here, I think that's scheme four or something like that, just to begin to investigate whether there was any reason to make some major differences. One thing, though, that I think we have reached a conclusion about is, if you make that connection between the two, you've got a fairly small piece of real estate on both sides of that existing corridor. And so it didn't make a whole lot of sense to try to get the entire staff up in this area and sort of give the rest of the building, I don't have the existing here. You know, and give, and give the rest of this area to the public. So if you think about coming down this way, which is an option, and making that visual connection, maybe you get some more real estate over here, more contiguous space, which may open up some options.
When, when you say coming down that, there, you mean breaking a hole?
Right.
Creating a portal, let's call it.
That's correct. That's correct. And actually, enclosed, this is an exterior walkway right here. So yes, to enclose it, building a curtain wall or a storefront on the outside. Yes, sir.
Yeah, one of the things at the end of our last discussion, which ended up in that octagon space, was I think we had a feeling that the octagon space, well, kind of a unique, really was a total waste of floor area. That it's just, doesn't, can't do any, do anything there. And given the limited space, it's not, it's not a luxury we could necessarily afford. At least that's my sentiment. I was wondering, and I'll just use my finger here, is that given that we have this...
There's a pointer, it comes out that end.
It comes out this end.
Right. There's a little dot that you push.
You push the dot.
There you go.
Favorite.
Is that, and given the peculiarity of these corridors on the outside, so that they're not double loaded, just single loaded, which is, goes against what you would want to do. Why not then just bring corridor over here, and then here, and then rank a key intersection from there all the way straight in? And so what you end up with is a large, a large space here, and another large space here. So you eliminate this zigzag here and this crazy line here, except that you can still have access to that doorway to the parking lot, which I think needs to be enhanced as a clearly defined, important entry and a lot. I mean, that's just a form of, by the way, directly octagon, you're rid of those corridors.
It's a lot of square footage, too. You can just see graphic, there's a lot of space in there.
Many airplanes, like the Chinese.
I don't know, this is, this is Ellen's.
Tim, have some comments, you have some comments?
So, I'll just preface my comments by saying that my father was an architect. And so, since I was a little kid, I spent a lot of time looking at drawings like this that used to be hand drawn, always. But the drawing is a tool to achieve some outcomes. And so, I don't, you don't really want me making suggestions on where to put corridors and things, because I don't understand the last little bit of code requirements. And just thinking about configuring this place as a six-foot wide and that place as an eight-foot wide and the windows, I just don't have that in my ability to quickly think about all those components. And so, I worry about us getting in the weeds, especially at this stage, by picking one designer versus others, opposed to taking your recommendations of what designs would achieve, set of principles. And so for me, the, some of the principles are, and some of the most important questions, these are not all principles. That space, that space right there, just, you know, if we could make better use of that, reconfiguring all of this, like, that's my one architecture, this thinking of, just, not just how, where to use that, that octagonal space is, that whole space in general, for creating a barrier between the library. I think about the cost of having to maintain staff and the rest of the building when the library is open on weekends, that we, because we can't close off the library. So when is it important to have the library have access to the rest of the building, when if we close it off? So, I'm not as convinced that having, you know, the city building has one, two, three, four, five, six doors right now, like, I don't, I don't know that that's my highest priority. I care about making sure that we focus on some of the things that the citizen and the residents, the workshops and the discussions pull out. So, I think of more books or an equal number of books as being important. I think of technology space as being particularly important. I think of quiet space, but also space that doesn't have to be quiet, as being important and overcrowded children's library. And I think about trying to save the trees on the south side, is that south? That's south. South side of the building, the really big trees, has something that is, by the designs we looked at last time, I think it would be really difficult for those designs to not violate the way our tree, our arborists would, would interpret our code. So, so those are some of the constraints. And sort of the, the visual one would be, or the aesthetic one would be, windows glass, more light inside, more natural light. And I think I just stop there and say, those are the things that I'm trying to get more out of the library, out of the library renovation. But I don't really understand what they're, you know.
If I can follow up on Councilmember Mail's approach to this, I'd like to see even a little bit more definitive list that the council agrees to, of what are we trying to accomplish? You know, how much more book space do we need? How much more computer space, or how much less computer space do we need? And have kind of a, a list of, here's, here are, as Tim called them, priorities, but, you know, here are the, the accomplishments, the goals that we're trying to meet in doing this. Rather than talking about a design at this point, talk about what it is we want to accomplish. And then we can, then you can come back with, with a couple of design proposals that would meet those goals.
Well, I think you're both exactly right, because I think one of the purposes of generating a lot of different ideas is that you can, that we do them for you, in effect. We become the pencil and you can begin to react to them. And I think that you're at that point, that you've seen enough, you've walked around enough, you've been, I guess, sensitized to some of the, the issues, that, that you could probably begin to do that. You know, there's not an infinite number of options, but there's some options that perhaps we didn't think about that you folks would be willing to investigate. We always set certain parameters and then see what we can do within those parameters. If you had different parameters, that begins to open up other options. And I think some of the things that I've heard in the last meeting and this meeting is a willingness to investigate what happens if you go out in this direction. You're absolutely right, there's, there's this great stair right next to the, the door that you come in that goes down to the police parking. And, believe it or not, that had, if that doesn't stay, something like that has to be there, we believe, from a code standpoint. But we'll look into that a little bit more seriously. So I think that, that by defining some of the things that you care about, one of which could be, make sure you don't even go near a major tree, begins to establish those parameters and enables us to develop some options for you that, that...
And I think it goes beyond just what it is that we'd like to see, but I think it is, what is it that staff's proposing that we accomplish? That we add, you know, 50,000 new books, we add, you know, 13 new computer stations, we double the size of our children's area, you know, whatever it is, we know what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Let me, let me...
This sheet that Valen has prepared, that, that kind of takes from the studies that were done already.
It takes from Greg's report largely, plus some of the information from the res, the meetings with residents.
I just want to make a couple of general points. And what Terry was talking about, building in what Tim was talking about, I don't feel like, I don't want to be in the position of saying, well, we agree that we want to, you know, add space for X number of more books or X number of books. I feel like what we need is space that's flexible well into the future. Partly what got us where we are now is some design decisions that were made with the original library that limit what we can do and make it, so that we can't change with the times, change with the technology. So, I'm looking for a sense of flexibility in space, just like you were talking about where the decision was made that I don't even remember, about leaving the, that stairway alone, which I think is next to the safe, which stayed.
Correct. It is.
Because it was nasty to get out of there. And so those types of things drive decisions that you get five, 10 years down the road and you go, why did we do that? And I, I could see where we could kind of end up going down some dead ends if we're focusing too much on what the particular use is now. And I think, thinking about dead ends, that we have, we have some visual dead ends in the building, and if this, if that stair that you were just talking about, where if we pushed out to the top left there, that stair that goes to the police parking, if that weren't there, that would be a dead end for where people are in that space, and we don't want to be designing dead ends. I think it makes a lot of sense to have that visual connection by expanding out onto that walkway down that way, that you've talked about any number of times, that one, yes, yes. That incorporating that somehow into the interior space is probably the cheapest space we'll find. But making it a, an actual physical connection would be tough, because you'd have to ramp down to get into the space. And that would be tough, because we'd be tearing up what we've got. So, I can see how it could be a visual space, a visual connection, but not necessarily a physical connection.
Frankly, because this area from here up is higher, that you don't really have to tear anything out, you can always come down within the existing space. And so you're actually building up a little ramp that, that comes down, which was one of the options we showed really early on. We said, let's accept the fact that that's higher, but let's put the ramp in here. And so you can do that.
If that can be done without lousing up that existing space, great. One of, one of my preconceived notions about all of this, any of the options that talked about moving the mural, I hear people saying, oh, that can be done relatively easily. I will probably never trust that answer. I will always assume that it will be a tough thing to do, there will be damage, there will be problems. And I just feel like that mural is, for me, is a given that it stays where it is.
That's fair enough.
I think that opening up with more glass and kind of the inside-outside sense on the, I guess we're calling the south of the drawing, toward, toward Philadelphia, is really important to do. Who needs views out to the parking lot to the left? So, some visual connection with the outside there is important. And I could see where, kind of another cheaper space where we're taking space that doesn't really do anything for us right now is that one by the, by the stairs to the police.
Right here.
That space there. So I, I could see saying, okay, maybe there's something that we can do to the south. I'm, I'm not ready to say we can't touch a tree, or we should definitely take out a tree there. I would be looking for options on how that would work. And I see moving to the left out there at the top corner, doing that visual connection outside the, the one that, you know what I'm talking about? And overall flexibility in design, so that 20 or 30 years from now, who knows what things will be? And it might be that there is some other need identified for some of this space and an ability not to have locked ourselves in.
Let me suggest a word that extends flexibility, which is adaptability, that it's not a matter simply of changing some use, but repurposing things as you go forward. I, I will say that while the idea of visually achieved unity is attractive, that I would prioritize functional unity over some kind of aesthetic or visual unity. And I do really wonder, maybe Ellen or someone else knows the extent of traffic between the community center and the current library? And maybe in the community meetings, you were able to project that forward? Because we did talk about that there is meeting space around the library, that the library needs meeting space, that, you know, what, you were discussing what the distinction is between the library and the rest of the community center, or whether there shouldn't be one. I would, I would really prioritize, however, properties such as a feeling that the library is inviting, that it's comfortable for uses, that it's a safe place for people to do things they want to do in the library, over the idea of visual unification or anything like that. In other words, the, the functional aspects and also the, the properties that, that give the library char... character other than aesthetic properties. And part of the reason for that is just one that we all have in mind, even if we haven't said it all that much, which is consciousness of costs.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, you know, we have been looking at the library. Partly because we know that contemporary libraries have got to be flexible. We're not sure where they're, where they're going. They're becoming as much of a community center as, you know, an information center in a community. So flexibility is a good thing. By the same token, we also realize that there's some relationships that are important, particularly between the staff area and their ability to monitor what's going on. So there are some adjacencies that are helpful to achieve. And it's interesting, we've heard a lot about what we did during the community meetings, about a lot of the kids who kind of go right through the library from the community center and then they, they go out to the, to the bus stop or whatever. So there does seem to be a circulation need through the library a little bit.
So I do that myself. Occasionally I use the bus, occasionally I use the bike share station and I come through the library and just walk, breeze right past the desk there. And, and you know, that says something, however, about the, we don't exactly have a campus here, but we have a series of buildings and certain key functions that service the whole of the community center library complex, let's call it that. Like the bus and bike share and the parking lots and so on are awkwardly laid out around the exterior of the building and down below as well. So if we can do something as part of this project that creates greater exterior unity or overall unity to the whole complex, then that's a good thing. Once again, I do conscious of costs, however.
It's interesting, when you look at this as a diagram and you wanted to connect, you'd almost talk about, and we did talk about this, I haven't shown you a scheme this way, is that the, because people often come from parking to a public building, they drive to the, to the public building, that to a certain extent, a front door way back here rather than way over here, just from a diagrammatic sense, makes a certain amount of sense from parking and you're actually closer to the community center. I don't know, I mean, people obviously come into the community center right here. If there was a way of somehow having entrances from parking and still have the visual connection, but maybe not such a strong physical connection, that may make some sense if in fact it becomes really important to literally, figuratively combine these, these functions somehow.
Yeah, I mean, to me, where the library entrance is right now is really hidden. And so even if you're driving down Philadelphia, it's not, it doesn't pop out. So I can see something of a main entrance. I mean, I certainly feel that a strong entrance to what's now the computer center as a main entrance is important, but I can also see something that's more kind of directly fronting on Philadelphia, that has a, has a more, more obvious entrance.
You're always going to have the problem, though, of the wall.
Right. But, but even if that entrance is closer to the parking lot on that end, it could be useful.
I mean, we talked early on, you know, we talked about putting some sort of a canopy or something and announcing the fact that this is here. This area over here on the side of the library is heavily planted, but it also has some mechanical equipment in it. But if in fact this edge between the parking lot and all the public facilities was defined as if it were a, you know, had there been a canopy or a loggia or an arcade of some sort, that simply connected and said, you know, here is the front in big quotes from parking, but you can pierce that in a number of different locations. So the thought of, maybe perhaps not literally, but somehow even connecting so that there was an entrance, maybe you can't come into the library, but maybe you enter an entry sequence into this building that doesn't necessarily have to be a front door, a literal front door. And yet you could still see and there'd be all kinds of visual connections between Philadelphia Avenue. So there's some other, certainly some options. I think this is the kind of dialogue that, you know, we have with a couple of people. The more people who enter into that dialogue, especially who is the decision makers, the more helpful that is.
Can I ask a question about this southern exposure toward Philadelphia and the trees? In the first couple of drawings, there's, there's a smaller tree. I'm trying to remember if this is, I'm assuming these trees that are on here are kind of accurate.
Yes.
That there are kind of three bigger perimeter ones closer to Philadelphia and then there's two smaller ones that are in closer to the building.
That's correct.
And some of these drawings move into spaces that take out the two smaller ones and leave the three bigger ones. And to the extent that that is feasible, moving in that direction, you're, you're tearing into kind of one facade and kind of cutting costs and disruption that way. And if it were, and if it were to say, okay, that makes a certain amount of sense and there's ways to jog it, like on floor plan option one, which is the third page, that if you, if you expand in that way, you're mostly keeping trees.
That's correct.
And getting close.
And, yeah, but you know, it's like, well, maybe things need to be adjusted a little bit, but there's some possibility for adding some real space that kind of doesn't give you weird offshoots, but kind of squares it up so that you've got a lot of flexibility in how you design it. If there's the possibility of doing something over in that other area that kind of regularizes that facade, like you were just talking about in the orientation toward the parking lot, and if it makes sense doing that other visual connection corridor, that kind of says, okay, you're touching it in three spots, you're not taking out things that will give lots of people heartburn and opening up possibilities for how you reorient your entrances and your way to get at it. And just a quick reminder that as we can see on that same page, where the entrance is used to be a play, a way that people got in there and that whole entrance, that circle and everything else, got wiped out because of that flood wall.
That's correct.
And it sounded like you had some ideas for some options of how to maintain what's required by code for that flood wall, yet get through it.
Right. And the easy answer to that is simply make. The first two feet of any part of the facade, a poured concrete wall. Doesn't have to, you don't have to have the distance, you don't have to have the wall out here and the building back here. You simply get the wall there. Now, the issue is the entrance, you know, where the quote "front door" is. And that just takes some negotiations and some thought about how to do that.
Some ramping.
Yes, yes. Make sure you have it at the high point, not the low point. Yes.
Listen to your comments. Your setup makes me wonder, wondering if we had some of that. And that if we did, you use the word "front door," make the rear, the whole complex look like it's a front door instead of looking like it does now, which is sort of like utility entrances that you stumble upon and think, oh, gosh, does this, right now, you look at those doors, that one door there, you don't know whether, where it takes you, whether it's open or not. If that could become the main entrance to the library, then maybe you just don't even need that entrance that's facing Philadelphia Avenue. Because in truth, if people are using the library as a corridor, then they could just as easily walk that way.
We already blocked them off with the wall.
That's true. You can't get there from the outside.
Right. And so that frees up, that creates some flexibility that doorway now doesn't, if you want to preserve that doorway, it kind of locks us, it clamps down on what our flexibility is.
One of the things that I think, you know, I mean, there are some people that feel very strongly that meaning this entrance from the library to Philadelphia, and I think it's more an emotional one than anything else. But I do want to reiterate what Councilmember Grimes mentioned about being able to sometimes segregate the library from the best of the, of the center for when there's time, when the center would otherwise be closed, but you'd want an activity in the library and to be able to have, you know, a specified entrance that's all secure that way, you know, so you can have both. And so, you know, that's just, that's just an architectural problem to resolve, but.
Yeah, but I don't see losing an entrance on Philadelphia where it is now as exacerbating that problem, I think it, because if you've got the entrance back over at an extended octagon to the parking lot, you can still then close it off from these other weird corridors that come around.
Right, right.
With some sets of doors.
Right.
That are glass doors. And is there a reason, going back to my earlier point about not creating dead ends, is there a reason to the, I'll have to hold it.
No, you should. Yes, yes.
Oh, I do. Is there some way to, if we do something out in here, to then kind of make it so that what goes on back in here just stops there? We lose this completely as the connection and we have a connection here and through to an entrance here?
I'd have to double check. You're allowed to have, I can't, I think this building's all sprinkled. And so there's what's called a dead end corridor, where you're allowed to go down a corridor where there's no way of getting out. Maximum dimension of that is depending upon if it's sprinkled or not, 50 feet. So if that dimension, I'll do a dueling thing here. If the dimension, this is really confusing. If the dimension from here to there, or let's say to there, where you enter the restroom and this suite, there's less than 50 feet, you could incorporate that into the building and you wouldn't have to have that corridor. The issue, though, is ultimately, you know, somebody mentioned, gee, could you put the cross corridor here? Yes. In fact, that door could be moved over here, too. It's not a big deal. So yes, you could conceivably close this off and terminate a corridor and not get there. I think that's what the rec department sign up areas. So yes, that's something that you could explore.
One of the things that is, is important is that redoing the bathrooms in the library, which is important to do. Part of the reason that things haven't been closed off on these corridors for when we've had security.
Access to bathrooms.
Is access to those bathrooms that are there. And I, you know, I'm, I don't have a problem.
So, so make them a Jack and Jill and you lock off one side or the other?
I mean, there's a variety.
They're accessible both ways.
I mean, I think that one of the things that's important is that the library has the better bathrooms and the nice stuff.
Yeah. I must admit, I can't figure out how they got away with only the couple of one-holders that are there. My only conclusion is that they were allowed to count the locker room at the end of the gym to provide all the restrooms for the, you know, community center functions.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this obviously was use of what was there before and they kind of got away with it.
The library was there before.
No, the bath, the bathrooms.
I know.
But yeah, the library was there.
But I think some of the comments I've heard tonight really opened up some new parameters and enable us to investigate some things. I have to admit that part of the goal was to see if we couldn't expand the library in a way that we thought was responsible from an environmental standpoint without, and make a good library out of it, without a lot of emphasis on the connection. And I think the more that we have heard over the last couple of months about the connection and the willingness to explore ways of both making the connection work and perhaps using some real estate that we did not use because we weren't sure we could actually use it, open up some real possibilities, potentially enable you to expand the library where you don't have to take as much property close to Philadelphia Avenue. I have to admit, I do not know if you have a parking problem right now, whether the parking lot gets filled up.
It does. Tuesdays and Thursdays in particular.
By the same token, these are the widest parking spaces I've seen and perhaps.
I think, I think there's some ways to deal with, I mean, one of the things about the parking lot is that the actual width of the parking lot is a little bit greater than it needs to be. And so there, there is some, you know, there is some flexibility about meeting standards.
Considering restriping it now?
I'm sorry?
Could you be considering restriping it now?
I don't have a problem restriping it, but what, and that makes, right. But, but the, but the actual width.
Right. This dimension across here, it's huge.
Right. It's what we had before, so we haven't played with it. But, but you can narrow the aisle.
Correct.
And it's still provide the same number of parking spaces.
I don't know.
Do you think narrowing that would keep people from coming through?
Can't read the dimensions, but there are, those are drawings.
No.
I would just comment about that actual width in the parking lot is, I think, really useful because you get, when the parking lot's full, like it was when I came down here very recently, I couldn't find the space. You know, I really had to look hard to find, finally find the space that was over there by the basketball court. It allows for people to maneuver in and out of spaces, but it also allows for people to keep moving east and west or this way through that space fairly comfortably.
Yeah. No, I'm not saying that we have to narrow it, but certainly when we're talking about this, that is an option.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a sense that any of you are interested in an option that moves the mosaic?
I'm fully supportive of it and I just, I like the mosaic, so if you keep it, that's great. And it's just feasibility. So if we got a cost estimate, if it was free to get somebody to tell us how much it would cost to move it.
It cost what, about 15,000?
Yeah. I talked to the person who installed it.
For a fixed price.
When I talked to the person who installed it some months ago, he didn't say it would be easy. He said it could be possible. And I think he estimated 10,000 to take it down and maybe another 5,000 to reinstall it. But it's these, what, four by four sections with tab con screws? But they're all filled in with cement now, so.
I mean, just for me, to Seth's point before, you know, if we come up with some options in terms of function and it turns out the best, otherwise most cost effective way to get everything we want into the package is to move the mural, then if it's truly only 15 or let's say $25,000 on a $3 million project.
For me, the more important thing is to lessen, I think someone used the word encroachment onto that area near Philadelphia. That's more of a priority to me than, it seems, for me, it's the encroachment and then maybe the mural is the second or third thing down. But if we could use space still, as we were fixing, to the left and in the parking lot, I think that would be much more important in the other corridor you've been talking about. And I just, also what Seth said before, I don't remember the exact words you used, but I think you talked about, you know, the, more the feel and the atmosphere in the library. I think the staff has done this incredibly so, given what they have to work with. And as much as possible, if we can create a space that is welcoming, doesn't feel like you're in a maze or feels sort of, has vacant pockets, which is sort of how it feels to me right now.
We didn't go down the, we didn't go down the.
To repeat one word, the security, because we were talking about the lack of visibility and the staff.
That's right.
For instance. And you also have been talking about the need for staff to have an understanding of what's going on.
Right. And the other word you used was adaptable.
Adaptive. I wrote manipulate, but I think adaptable better.
And I'll just say that it seemed like Councilmember Mayles and I were coming to some kind of agreement about what we were drawing down here, which was kind of a modified version of the one that I was referring to that was the third page in.
Option one.
Option, floor plan option one.
Yeah.
Which was kind of not necessarily. Which was kind of not necessarily the extent of the way that's drawn, but that's kind of the idea. And the, and the straightening out of the piece up at the top left and the, and the connection on the, on the right, on the, I don't know what to call that, visual connection.
Right.
The, if you get those three pieces, it kind of, it kind of regularizes, it, it gives you a space that doesn't have odd shapes so that you can deal with the adaptability and all of those other issues, and put the interior pieces where you want, and, and put lots of glass on this extension that breaches through that, that node and reestablishes it, and puts the entrance where it needs to be, and figure out how to deal with that corridor that was coming through by the rec offices, and how to, and how to get accessibility to bathrooms to be able to close it off from the community center or vice versa, that kind of, I think, gets to all the issues.
Are you done here?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess, to summarize for the line in my heart. I do think that area to the, to the, to the left on that drawing there absolutely needs to be explored. I understand that, I think the staircase to the basement for this parking lot has to stay. Could that become an interior exit to the parking garage?
It's, it's possible. I really need to go to look at that from, because we realize that, I think that's the end of the, the parking down there. And they need to have a way out now. And maybe a different way of doing that. We haven't spent much time looking at that, to be honest with you.
Maybe that function just gets extended out.
Exactly. So, we'll take a look at that, but.
Yes. But of course, that was there at a time when during the design, the original design of the community center, the whole police garage was going to be, parking area was going to be covered. But now you have it open, and you've got the stairwell, and you were out there by the mosaic, for saying, you don't know why it's there. So that would seem to offer whatever fire escape anybody needs to get out of that area. So that would be something you'd look at. But beyond that, I, I like the idea, the expansion towards Philadelphia Avenue in option three. But I do think the major trees there need to be a paramount, I've told it to those at all costs, and not, and not even be close to being threatened. There just isn't any need to do that. I think the mosaic technically could be moved, but I'd rather it not be, and I'd rather just leave that as a, as an option, as a last choice myself. And I, I do think that whatever we can do to integrate the library to the community center, with the, with the understanding that it can be closed off on Sundays, let's say, or for whatever other reason we might need to close it off, is, is really, really important, that we have clear visual connections as much as possible. Because quite honestly, right now, even if you come into this, this complex as frequently as we each do, I still get mentally confused. Like, the other day, I wanted to look for that bathroom that's up there. I kind of, I know it's there, I just can't quite figure out, and I ended up walking all the way around in a very big circle before I found it. It just, it's just bizarre.
It is.
It is, sort of like a bizarre, you know? Doesn't need to be that way. And I, again, I need to be persuaded that we need to have the, an entrance that's facing Philadelphia. I'm not sure that we do, but I'm willing to be persuaded that there's a good purpose for that. So that's sort of my, my take on it.
I, I think looking through this list, you know, about ninety percent of the things on this list are things that we could do without expanding the space, or things that we would have to do if we do do any modifications, because they're required by code, current code. So, the other ten percent, though, I think, I, I think it would be valuable to know what it is we want to accomplish, you know, kind of quantify that other ten percent, so we know what we're going to end up with, what we want to end up with, and compare that to the cost to see whether that's worth it to us. And I can give you the list of the things I think are required costs.
I think one of the big things is as soon as you meet code in terms of both restrooms and sizes and aisle width, you actually now reduce the ability to have what you have today. And so you're almost even keeping the.
Just even, you have to expand.
Yeah, even by keeping your existing collections.
And, and that's why I think it's important to quantify this, because we could be terribly disappointed to do a major expansion and end up with just a nicer library with the same thing we got.
Yeah.
Right? So let's know what we're doing.
Makes sense.
What are the next steps you're seeking, Eric?
Then, there's, I guess, I think it's on for the twenty-seventh, would be a contract with, with him to go to the next step. More than just, I mean, we have an option to just do another concept design, you know, there's very small amount. And then there's a different option, which is to hire Greg Lutmeier for the full design work of the project, and recognizing that we still have steps to go forward in terms of making decisions, but.
And how is that second one different from the first?
There's a, well, even just his presence here is, is an expansion of his first contract. I have a option to go.
So the, so the first one is just a small expansion to get the, like.
Yeah, actually, that's not a decision point for you. It's something that I could do under the previous contract, and we've got the budget for that. What's, what would be the decision for you is to retain him for the design and engineering work. That still involves.
But we're not to that point yet.
It's going to take different steps, because he's got to go through, he's got to take what he's heard today, come up with one or two versions of that, and then it needs to have a community, at least a council, like probably a community discussion.
So it's taking where we've gotten to this evening and coming back with one or two that we kind of go, yeah, that seems to be pretty good, now we can take public comment.
Right.
On the concept.
That's right.
So, maybe you could recap the elements that will go into a next revised concept?
I think that, you said one or two, I have a feeling it's more like three or four, because of what I've heard.
Thinking.
Tonight. And I think part of what we need to do is we need to explore ways of expanding the library, not just in this direction, but in other directions, whether it's this way, whether it's this way, exploring what happens here. I think we know what the options are here. I'd like to explore some different ways of getting into the library, particularly from this direction. I'd like to think a little bit more seriously about some of the code implications of that stair and, and this corridor. We'll probably come back with an, an option that ignores an entrance down here, and we'll probably come in this way somehow. There's another way of even coming in halfway through. If you looked at your option two, there's no reason why we couldn't put a door, we could separate what we identify there as children with the staff and actually come in from the side there, splitting that so that you're nowhere near where the flood issue is, and kind of come in that direction. Maybe not at the corner, and maybe not up here, but kind of in the building, if you will. Something a little bit different. So, I'd like to explore some of those options as, as, as you come there to see what the, where that goes. And I think I'd like to explore a little bit more about how to, how to use some of this space that you've already built as part of the library, and see if we can't minimize expansion and maximize perhaps the rethinking of all this square footage, which is probably about a third of, of the size of the library now, just graphically, you can see that. Yes?
If I could just, I'm leaning on that. I mean, for me, I wonder if we got the cost and feasibility impact of, you know, drawing the line like this. And then also, people have used the word flexibility, what was the word?
Adaptability.
Adaptability. Right? So the ultimate adaptability would be if we had a two-phase project, and we said we're going to expand this wall, and this is going to be the construction zone right here for the first phase of the project, and the library's going to remain open. And then once that part's done, then we're going to use that as the temporary library while this part gets done. So I just wonder whether, and, and I'm thinking of like the entrance being right there or somewhere over there, and this entrance going away.
So there could be a number of them. I mean, we haven't really, we think about phasing in the back of our mind, but it hasn't been, you know, elevated to one of the, one or two most important aspects. But that may be something to really investigate.
Yeah, and I, just, just a heads up, I mean, in, in thinking about, you know, doing a work on the library, there's been some discussion among staff about, you know, how do we accommodate the library functions during renovation? And it's a little mind blowing, I mean, there's a number of options, but it is something that is, is a whole part of the work program. And I, I like the idea of, of an opportunity to minimize the disruption if possible.
Buy John Nevin Zanderson, move there.
Yep, do that.
So, as I said, I think that we're going to come back with more than one or two options. I think we still need to explore. You've opened up some possibilities, and I think that helps.
I wanted to express a bit of reluctance regarding the current entrance. I'm going to get up rather than use a pointer on the current entrance on Philadelphia. When, when you think about how people approach the library, really, it's from three or four directions. One is along Philadelphia, along from here, you know, the one elementary school is here and so on. So it's really not a problem to go in like this somehow. But then you have the Philadelphia and Maple intersection over here.
Right.
And so, so picture people coming down Maple or coming down Philadelphia, and they're coming like this, and okay, then they have to go, or they have to somehow navigate through the community center. And the same goes for all the people who are on, coming along Maple Avenue in this direction, you know, they have to go like this, or they have to go through the community center. And there's a certain simplicity to this entrance here that, well, that's not the greatest entrance for people coming from Maple, but I'm, I'm just thinking about how you get into this building.
But don't forget, you have that wall there that they have to go around anyway.
Right. They still have to go around it right now.
Yeah. For anyone with any.
Well, there's some visual, but there's some visual.
It's very problematic.
Kids can jump over the wall.
I jump over the wall.
I jump over the wall. But it's not really a good, you know.
No.
It's okay for you youngins.
I just wanted to ask you or Ellen as to whether you've done any kind of accounts, counts of people, where, how they enter, those who are not using the library as a way to get from one place, you know, as a corridor, how do people actually tend to come into the library? Whether it's, there's only two entrances now.
Always. I mean, there, there certainly is, there's a fair amount of through traffic, especially in the after-school hours. And initially, I think we thought, our thinking was, well, we can prevent that by, you know, making them two separate buildings. But we really need it because we need the access to the community center for a lot of different things, and.
And I have to say, I mean, I think even if somebody's just walking through the library, they know it's there. It's friendly.
Right, exactly.
It's, you know, I, to me, I, I don't actually think that's a negative thing.
And people, yeah, people, people come in from, especially from Philadelphia and may use the library and go on to, you know, another use of the community center. So it does feel more to people like, you know, a whole, a whole complex, which is good.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Well, if you have other thoughts of a past moment, but I think we've got, got some working items to work on.
I just want to add one other thought, because I'm putting myself in the place of people watching us talk here who are on, watching this through the cameras. And we haven't said too much orally here about community input, and I don't want residents, I mean, we're sitting here talking about, I want to do this, you want to do that, we should do this, and, and I, I'm thinking that there's a lot of residents out there who are thinking, well, when do I get my say? Before the city council makes up its mind and decides to do what it's going to do. And I want, just to make sure that we emphasize that there's going to be plenty of opportunity before this thing takes shape. There has to be, for, for community input.
Absolutely.
And I would just add that, to Councilmember Seaman's point, Cora, if I were you, I don't know what drawings I would draw, because I haven't heard from the majority of us whether we want more books or fewer, whether we want more glass or less glass, whether we want more computer space or less computer space, more meeting rooms or less meetings rooms. So, I worry that you're going to produce two or four designs, and.
I want all of those.
You'll build in that space, right, we'll have a new drawing, so we'll have a new design, but we still want to know what we get in terms of services.
I think one of the things that you need to almost go back to the original visioning report.
And then look my report, which talks about square footage for books and, and.
There's a program.
There's a whole program of requirements in there that would be useful to revisit.
But I mean, you don't have council endorsing those things, right?
No, and that's, I would like, I would like that.
That's what I'm trying to, also agree, agree with that.
I'm assuming you're going to come back to us with a kind of more, for the, for the space that we're talking about, it's almost like coming back with the, more of the middle version rather than either of those two side versions, that we're not necessarily going to see, you know, drawings of chairs and bookshelves and things like that, we're going to see space definition.
What I, what I might do, because we don't have this drawing except in this format, and I have a print of it, I don't have any electronic copies, I don't think, or, and we might be able to draw, redraw this. But what we might ultimately do is superimpose a library on these drawings so that you can begin to see the relationship between the two. Frankly, this was sort of a last minute thing, I thought it was important to see this, because we keep looking at these focused drawings about the library, but it's so important to understand its relationship to the rest.
Because, because once we've got that larger relationship, then we can put the pieces.
Understand. Understand. We don't have a survey, for instance, so I don't know. We think it's pretty accurate, we've taken it from aerial shots, the original construction documents, so we have to assume that they are reasonably close. So, we don't want to get within two feet of something when it's already, you know, had a scale of it, but I think it's important to be able to see this.
I think I can answer Tim's question, or comment, rather, in maybe just two or three sentences, which is that offhand, my offhand target would be to increase the perimeter of the library and reconfigure the internal space in a way that preserves the existing book capacity, computer capacity, but modernizes the office space, the bathrooms, the ADA compliance. In other words, don't expand the library perimeter and the internal space reconfiguration beyond necessarily, beyond what's, what's needed to maintain current operations. That's more than three sentences, but.
Yeah. I think one of the biggest changes, for instance, that would increase what's there now, is the need for some group rooms, quiet, you know, group study, whether they're quiet or noisy, depending upon who's in them, which is a really important aspect, we're seeing at all libraries. But beyond that, you're right, I think that the staff workstations need to be reasonable. I think we need to provide appropriate restrooms. The other piece of this that I know the library has, has requested is a, a program room that they can schedule, despite the fact that we have rooms like this, they can't all of a sudden, they have to, I guess, negotiate the use of a room like this. And most libraries have the same issue. We, we hear so much of this, oh, my gosh, you're, there's a room right over there, why don't you just use it? Well, if it's used sixty percent of the time, then they can't use it. So, that's another function that becomes pretty important at most libraries.
Just to jump in for a second.
Those are examples of needs that you see, but.
Correct.
Councilmember Grimes didn't just endorse those, right?
And, and in fact, the answer to that is, well, are the rooms that the library can't currently schedule, are they used to a high enough capacity, I mean, do they have any excess capacity? Or is there simply a computer system?
Or is there simply a computer system question or permissions question that would allow the library staff to access and schedule without causing a conflict with the rec department?
I think there's a...
That's not the answer right now.
Right, I understand that. I mean, I think there's...
It's to say that there's an alternative answer possible.
There is. I think, you know, if there were, I've told this to Ellen, I mean, the one thing that I have, the one area where I have mixed feelings is on that program space in the library as opposed to just use of these space. These spaces, I will say, almost all of our spaces are used very heavily. And so it's not just a kind of a rights to who, first refusal kind of thing question. It really has turned into a fairly, you know, it's a well-used building. And so, I have mixed feelings about that. I think part of it will define, will be decided a little bit about what, what happens with the exterior and what, you know, what amount of space you can get.
If I can just add, we do use the meeting rooms for the adult book discussions, but those we have to schedule months in advance. Usually we're able to do that. If we suddenly get an offer for, through politics and pros, that an author or illustrator can come, we, we just don't have that much time necessarily to find a room. Sometimes we can't even get the auditorium when we need it. Also, for some of the smaller kids programs, which we have many times a week, as you know, it's nice to be able to have them in a library space where parents and caregivers will also check out books, that kind of thing. We're also thinking that a program room, when it's not being used for programs, you can have, they have so much flexible movable furniture for libraries now. You can move furniture in and use it for wireless space, Wi-Fi space, which we also could use more of. So, to be honest, there are a lot of reasons why we would really like a program room, but that's, if you guys decide, that's okay.
Yeah, and I think, Kevin, I just want to front, help you and us.
And I feel compelled to just remind folks, I'll say I agree with what Councilmember Grimes said about how to, thinking about this, the couple sentences that were three that expanded to four or five. At the end of that, I thought, oh, and that can elicit a response from members of the public who say, well, all you're doing is expanding staff space. And we heard that same pronouncement when we did the community center, and I remember having to go through and totaling up square footages of spaces to prove that that was wrong. And so I would just say that, remember that that can be a perception so that as we think about this and talk about this, we have to remember to talk about the ways in which the adaptability of the space and some of these other issues and, and dealing with, we've, we've got to renovate it and modernize it, and that that has its own pressures, but that we're expanding the ability of the public to use the space.
Right. Good time to end. Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Good input. Appreciate it.